Oh, I don't have a packet.
Uh.
Oh.
Uh.
I just put salad and I like.
Yeah. Her. Shelley.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
On her next, her next one.
Uh huh.
Put in hand, just on her, we're minimum age code. Sorry, Dan.
I'd like to call the regular council meeting of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two to order. Everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance led by councilperson Fisher.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll take roll call of the council for attendance at the regular meeting. Councilperson Bradley. Councilperson Kemfer, absent. Councilperson Ginever. Councilperson Becker. Councilperson Fisher. Councilperson Schomburg. Councilperson Picarella. Councilperson Massa, absent. Uh, if you've had a moment to look at the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the council meeting of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty third meeting. Want you to have a moment to look through there.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the, uh, May twenty third meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, public comment, Chip Price, Elks Firework, July ninth, Mr. Eisenbys will have the floor.
Yeah, you all have your, uh, in your packets, their, uh, requests, the, uh, their annual fireworks, the annual, something you drove the, uh, 7:00 AM building, um, publicly, publicly walking up this and that.
Um, this has been going on with that incident for a long time, if the chief and the, uh, fire chief don't have any objections, I'll, uh, move to approve the event. If, to the extent that we need to approve anything, I guess.
Perfect, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, the check register and bills, Mr. Becker.
I'll move to approve the check register and bills, but I'll be perfectly honest, I have not had a chance to read through these, so if somebody else did have a chance to read through these and wants to make any comments, feel free.
Bills are paid.
Okay.
Legal fees are free, free toll.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on those?
Uh, just, uh, Jason, if we do start getting reports on the use tax, let us know what, how that's coming in, I'm sure you will.
Our sales tax, I did go through there, we are making a steady improvement on sales tax, so that's a, we're headed in the right direction on that, people purchasing, going, going good on that aspect of it, so. Uh, I had a motion and a second, I believe. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Alright, committee reports, the committee reports are in your packet. Does anyone have any questions regarding the committee reports? No questions?
Uh, I do have one, uh, Jason, uh, the water department was out working on the Eighth Street intersection there, at Truman Boulevard again the other day, I thought we had that fixed a long time ago.
There was a, uh, some sort of clean out, I guess, at the end of Bay Street and the highway.
Oh, is it?
Uh, so I think they were probably checking, they walked out on the corner.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's the one we, I called on. Yeah. Alright, uh, so building commission, good, street and light, Turner, all that stuff is in your guys' packet, um, Mr. Turner had, they removed the fence from the graveyard, everything on that, they replaced the sidewalk on, uh, Jefferson up there, so everything seems to be going good on that.
Good.
So, uh, alright, so council liaison reports, uh, library school board, councilperson Fisher.
Uh, the library's got some cool stuff happening, they're, they're having a cooking class on Wednesdays that starts on the twenty ninth, and also I have a reading to dogs, uh, program that starts also on the twenty ninth, so, uh, you can go online and get more information, or swing by the library and find out what they got going.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Uh, park, green business, councilperson Schomburg.
Um, park looks great, um, nice and tidy, and cool, like it's pretty cool every day.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I have, the park looks really good.
I had a phone call today, which is odd to get on, they complimented the park's bathroom on how clean it was, and I was like, fantastic, that's, our guys are doing a great job down there, so that's a good, that's a good thing.
Sewer commission, Mr. Picarella. Uh, planning and zoning, Mr. Becker.
Uh, there will be a meeting, um, the, I don't know if we've previously announced this, but the, uh, the date of the planning and zoning meetings is changing, used to be always on the third Thursday, and I believe for, go for a little while at least, it's gonna be on the second Thursday, so that'll be July fourteenth at six thirty PM, which is a Thursday here in the council chambers, to discuss an application for rezoning of, without getting too detailed about it, a, another parcel that's in the area of the, uh, Festus Airport.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, uh, zoning appeals board, Mr. Ginever.
I don't have anything.
Excellent, and Mr. Kemfer was for the levy commission, was there anything with that, Jason?
Alright, uh, does ha, anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous council meeting on April twenty seventh? Seeing none, move on, old business, we have none. New business, we have liquor license renewals for, in your packet, it's listed, uh, Aldi, CVS, Captain Z's, Casey's, Kelhut's, Mississippi River Eagles, Neighborhood, groceries, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license renewals for those businesses.
No issues with any of these?
No, sir, they're, in your packet, uh, the police department has researched all of them, uh, Sergeant Reese, uh, went through those and recommended all of those.
Okay.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, ordinance and resolutions, let me flip back here. Uh, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city limits under provision of section seventy one point zero one two RSMO. I'll entertain a motion to read bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two on its first reading by title only, an ordinance for the city of Crystal City, Missouri, annexing certain adjacent territory into the city limits under the provisions of section seven one point zero one two RSMO.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Alright, motion has been made in second, and to accept bill eighteen seventy two twenty twenty two on its first reading by title only, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mayor, can I assume that, uh, time is of the essence on this, and we need to read this a second time this evening?
We do, yes, sir.
I'll move to read bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two, uh, on its second reading by title only. Second.
Perfect, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two on its second and final reading by title only, an ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, annexing certain adjacent territory into the city limits under the provisions of section seven one point zero one two RSMO.
I'll move to accept bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two on its second reading. Second.
Perfect, motion has been made in second to approve bill eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two on its second and final reading by title only, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, I will poll the council, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Ginever?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schomburg?
Yes.
Mr. Picarella?
Yes.
Bill number eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two now becomes ordinance eighteen seventy two dash twenty twenty two, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Perfect, uh, then we move on to some resolutions we have, uh, Mr. Eisenbys, can you explain these three resolutions?
We have three resolutions before you, one for water, one for wastewater, and one for stormwater, these resolutions have to be passed, uh, in order for us to submit or offer funding for any project we have related to, so, those three items, so, these are the resolutions, we have our books, they are intended to apply for these grants.
Any questions on the res?
Can, can you go into a little more detail about this, I, I couldn't really understand it from the email that much, I know this has to, well, can, yeah, can you describe it a little more?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, I don't know really what you want me to say, but, um, there's a rest, so, we have to have these resolutions on file, um, passed before we apply for any kind of grants or dollars.
And this is related to?
These are related to water, wastewater, and stormwater for the potential project.
And that's to partner with the county, right? With the county, county water?
These are through, these are through DNR, so this is the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, that's, a lot of money millions of dollars available in our funding.
Okay.
We have to have these resolutions passed, and then there's an application that has to be submitted, that's why we pass these first, so this is just basically giving the council authority to apply for these grants.
So we would?
This is not the application, this is not, any, you know, we're not applying for anything yet.
Okay, but we would probably be applying for these grants regardless of anything, right? And no?
In some sort of way, yeah, but these are, this is our funding through the state, not through the county.
Gotcha. Um, but it's not related to any upcoming projects? Or is it?
We, well, we haven't filed anything yet, but regardless of what we file, these three things have to be passed.
Alright.
A resolution on each one of these has to be passed, so we can apply for water.
Yeah, I got you.
Water and stormwater, we haven't applied for anything, but there is stuff in the works.
Okay.
We're going to be applying for something.
Yes, I believe there's a five million dollar cap on each.
Yeah. And I, uh, I know I've said this in other meetings, but I can't remember if I've said it here, when federal money is raining down from the sky, the thing to do is set out buckets, so let's set out some buckets.
And we're just authorizing to, let's start filling these out to make sure we can fill, we can get our application.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
Uh, I do have one question.
Okay.
Can we make a single motion to adopt these three resolutions?
We absolutely can.
Thank you.
That's the worst.
I'll move to adopt resolutions number two dash twenty twenty two, three dash twenty twenty two, and four dash twenty twenty two.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. City administrator report, Jason?
Y'all have my report, do you have any questions, uh, or anything else?
Yeah, things, uh, I left my glasses on, must be something about Girl Scout house funding, I can't fucking make it off, I'll read it at home, what's it all about?
So, the building next door has the Historical Society, and we're, we're all feeling the squeeze of, uh, they're, they're kind of expanding that, but I, uh, you guys remember Clayton Lowery, he's here, sometime back, he's really kind of taken off and really done some good stuff over there, the Girl Scout, uh, the school owns the old Girl Scout house, and kind of said it's empty and vacant, so we're trying to marry the two, uh, and just going to pick the same, the Girl Scout house is the perfect spot for the, uh, the Historical Society, and we need that building, we need some of that building, um, and so there's some things that I'm gonna go to school board meeting tomorrow night, talk to the school about, uh, trying to get that, you know, for a real reach for a dollar or whatever, it's gonna have a use for it, but we will have to fix it up, we will have to help, uh, uh, with the Historical Society, uh, check, uh, wait, check, see, all of that, so, just trying to move things down, but I think it'd be a good start for the Historical Society.
Girl Scouts use it anymore?
Yeah.
No, it's vacant, basically, it's a liability for the school, honestly, and we can use it, and, uh, I think it benefits the community to have people going into that building, and the Historical Society's doing a, a great job next door.
And Mike, did, I heard that you actually led the project to redo the windows and everything, did you?
Uh, no, no, we started, you know, the dirt on the side of the building, my shop class did a little bit of the siding on the one side, and then we got, we had to stop for some reason on the front, that's why it's kind of missing on that one front side, but, but it just needs there, and I think bees are in it and stuff, so.
Yeah, there's bees in it.
We'll, we'll get it, I had to fill out some accident reports on that, but yeah, some bees.
I just heard that, I, I didn't know the history of who fixed it up before, so.
Yeah, we certainly do have one.
Uh, Jason, I do have one question on that, as I was reading through this, do we have an estimate on what it's gonna cost to fix up that house, 'cause what you're, if I'm reading your report right, we're gonna pay to have that house fixed up so the Historical Society can move into it? Any, any estimate?
Well, I thought there, I'm thinking somewhere around ten thousand, but I, I just kind of decked, and I wanted to hear what Clayton, a month ago.
Yeah, Clayton's grandfather came by and looked at it and made a list of things that he thought needed to be done, and just kind of ballparked about twelve thousand dollars to fix it all up.
Now, I don't have any objection to this in principle, I think it's a good idea, but I thought if the Crystal City Historical Society is a separate entity from the city, I thought there was some limitation on the city's ability to just expend money for the benefit of another organization.
We're not doing that now, and we have been doing it since nineteen seventy nine, I think.
I don't know.
Letting them use our building is different than like paying for a building that isn't ours.
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point, well, there's the insurance liability in that, too.
Yeah, and so, Tony had given me, uh, a link to a grant for the MFF, which I kind of told Marv to go check on that, so Marv can make the application, so she's gonna look in that, but, I don't know how we'll do it, the, the Historical Society obviously doesn't have very much money.
Right.
So I don't know if they'll have to, I don't know if they want to disband their five oh one C three, but.
I wouldn't think so.
I don't, I don't.
It's hard enough to get that, I don't think you wanna let it go.
Expand the five oh one C three?
Disband.
Oh, disband it?
For the city to take it over, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's our history, it is a, a good, apparently, I think it's a separate entity, but.
Anyway, just like, for instance, in the past, we've gotten dinged for, uh, doing certain things for the school district, which is a separate entity, even though it's also called Crystal City, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could probably do a, a resolution, and we do things if we don't, don't need schools, so our, our school is nothing.
Well, yeah, but the, the thing for driver training has like a specific, like that's a policy goal, I don't, anyway, I don't wanna be a stick in the mud, but like, just make sure that our I's are dotted and T's crossed and everything on that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, so once I meet the school and our attorney drafts something up, and.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the very early stages of just, hey, this is a idea we're going down, if it, if it works, great, I mean.
But it'd be, it'd be nice for the Historical Society to have more space, it'd be nice for something to be in that building, maybe.
Right, I think we're on the same page, we just need to make sure.
Right now, the, uh, ongoing permanent lease between the Historical Society and the, and the city, so, but they are leasing that building over there.
Right.
That precedent has been set, but, yeah, this is different.
Alright, uh, mayor's report, uh, I have some board appointments, I'd like to appoint the following people in the various city boards, uh, you should have had that in your packet in the mailbox, um, I'm gonna go ahead and just appoint all of these at once, and go from there, for Boza, I have, uh, this is a two-year term, Steve Rubidoo, and Fred Cundy, uh, for P and Z, four-year term, I have none, library board, uh, Steve Bacon, Marsha Anderson, Jessica McGrail, uh, park board, I have Jimmy Hinton, Tom Shilly, Chris Hodge, and then police personnel board, I have Nicole Hillmeyer, Dave Crump, and those are my appointees.
Mayor, most of these are reappointments, is that correct?
That is correct, they all.
Except for Tom, I'm assuming?
Uh, Tom, we appointed last, um, in April, but his, he was filling a term up for someone, so his term was up, and that's the same way with, um, Chris Hodge as well, and then Jimmy was a.
Right.
Every one of these are a reappointment, I believe, so.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to approve all those?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, the motion in second, no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, also on the mayor report, real quick, uh, our bulk pickup, we are, we're seeing a ton of, uh, I think it's, it's almost an abuse, like we're picking up four mattresses from one house, and picking up, they have to call in and do a thing, I just kind of wanna get it on the council thing, it, I don't ever wanna get away from it, I just think there needs to be a fee associated with it for bulk pickup with fuel prices, things like that, we're doing about eighty stops every two weeks, uh, I mean, it's something that, we just talk to your constituents, see what they, they think on that, I mean, I was thinking a five, ten dollar fee just to pay for fuel, mainly, and, uh. And, uh, go.
We offer more than what most states do.
Absolutely, I, I mean, and I get a report, I just don't have all those set out, I just wanted you guys to.
I think some, some things are being brought in from other places here, too, so.
I agree, I agree, so.
Would that fee be per stop or per item?
It would be per stop, um, it, per use, basically, and we could just tack it on to their water bill, they call in anyway, sign up for the, the bulk pickup, and then our guys go out there, and it would be, here's a, a ten dollar fee, pick up your, your bulk item, whatever it may be, you know, I mean, now, some people stick out a vacuum, which is fine, but like I said, there's three mattresses, and there's like four bed friends, you know, some people are getting to the point of, it's a lot, but, uh, anyway, I just want that going on, I'll probably in the July, I'll, I'll have some more information for you guys, so. Okay, that's all I have, uh, round table, council comments, uh, Mr. Bradley? Mr. Ginever?
Uh, just one thing, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you brought up something about the bulk pickup, because, uh, I noticed that, I actually saw the, the trash people come and take some cardboard out of my regular trash can and put it into the recycling, so, are we recycling cardboard now, or does somebody just need the cardboard?
Um, I don't know, I know our recycling, they go around and pick up recycling, but it used to be, to my understanding, recycling used to be free, so we would free up some stuff, so we tried to recycle as much as we could, but now we get charged for recycling, so.
Well, this is specifically about cardboard, though, do you know?
The ladies want the clean cardboard, they'll take it.
Oh, really?
Pizza box, which has, I think, twice now, pizza boxes, they don't want those styrofoam hardware, because they've got stuff on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay.
I don't recall talking about that, but, okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Uh huh, Mr. Becker?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Mr. Fisher? Ms. Schomburg? Mr. Picarella?
I just want to thank you, Jason, real quick, with Dustin Jones, he talked about that yield sign on, just, I still think, you know, it's here, so, just.
The sign came in, but the post is not. Okay, that's fine.
I meant to, I meant to bring that up, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's good. Hands on vacation, I think, and seeing that one later, so I'll be sure, and you can follow up. That's all I have, I'm done, thank you.
Alright, well, that's all, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, oh, Mr. Cherry?
Yeah, I have a, a pretty quick thing.
Yes, sir.
Thing, uh, talking about your bulk pickup.
Yes, sir.
I hopefully really, uh, take a close look at this, because, uh, we do a better job than most people, as, uh, Councilperson said, as far as that, and I think that does a lot to keep the city, it'll be that much cleaner, uh, because we do that, uh, if you wanted to offer alternative, I, I would consider like a roll-up, dump certain people, could, uh, bring their state soon, dump it in, or stuff like that, but, uh, uh, I like to see the city clean, I don't mind paying a few extra bucks for it personally, myself, I, uh, I live in a neighborhood where people don't often use it, and they need to.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, they should, there's plenty of them using it, so.
Like, have to, in the middle of the night, they'll drag some of the people's junk out of the backyard instead of in the alley, and then call it in, you know, of course, you know, now that you know I'm considering it, I will do it. The second thing I would like to see, and I said this a couple, I said this last year, I mentioned it to Jason, and this kind of piggybacks this, I would like to see at some point the city do a, uh, local meeting, where we rent a people hall, or council members, park heads, get up, we ride through town, go through some alleys, we see what's going on in town, invite up, uh, what's going on, we got, we got buildings up on highways. Like that, but, uh, if this, if we're gonna continue seeing this, I think it's time to at least give it some thought, that this is, this is, this is, I, I mean, my teams are all connected, I will drop those, drop them.
Lawyers aren't cheap, that's, that's it, I mean, and, and Brandon, when we're going through this stuff, he's, he's doing our resolutions, everything has to be, there's a lot of working parts to that, making sure that we're covered on that end.
I, I specifically remember the last time we, we went out for bid for, uh, a different council, and I'd make, Jason might have been on the council at that time, and I think somebody came in and offered seven thousand dollars flat fee, uh, to be our, our, uh, lawyer, so, you know, if they did more work, it would still be seven thousand dollars a month, of course, this was twelve years ago, fourteen years ago, maybe.
I, I've just, I've raised a red flag, that's what I'm doing, okay, 'cause this is gonna become the new normal, uh, we can't.
I don't foresee this being the new normal by any means.
Well, not the way it's wrote down at all, it, continuing.
No, sir, it's just special ordinances and things of that nature that need his verification, just to make sure that we're not.
My job to raise these voices of caution, you, you just heard it.
Absolutely. No, we appreciate it. That's what your job is, so thank you. Alright. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned. Oh, wait, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Hearing none, motion carries. I messed it up at the end, I'm sorry.
You're really a no-hitter.
It's almost.
The carnival game will be on, we'll do it time, so...
I tried for you. We did, I mean- I know.